At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Hope, our superintendent, and she is going to have the presentation. Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Hope, our superintendent, and she is going to have the presentation. Okay, your way.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. I have about fifteen minutes of information on the MANDR program. On different costs, if there's any questions about how would this fit, what would the rooms be, and what does it look like over time? So, I'm hoping to address that information in this short presentation. First of all, to start the program off, we applied for two grants last year. And so, these first few slides will talk about the cost of the program this current year as we're currently running it. So, there's two different grants. There's a college board grant that brought us our first grade teacher. And what the district has paid for that teacher is twenty-six thousand D eight-two. And that includes the salary, retirement, workers' comp, all the essential state mandatory requirements. The rest of the salary is subsidized by the home law, which is the main office for Chinese language. You can kind of equate that to Washington's OSBI for Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction. We've spent, and this is an estimate, we have not yet spent this, so we are rounding this up, but you can add another fifteen hundred for staff development, supplies, training, and other costs. So, that brings the total of this grant for the first grade teacher to twenty-eight thousand D eight-two. The next slide shows the second grant we applied for. This grant was the Teachers of Critical Languages Program. This is our kindergarten teacher. This teacher is a half of an FTE or a part-time teacher. And we didn't pay hardly any grant for this teacher. The salary, the retirement, and the workers' comp are all provided by the grant. So, we spent very little. We did send the staff from our own staff for training to DC to meet with the other teachers. Most of that was paid for by the Critical Languages Grant, so the district spent two-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. And we had some mentor time in the beginning of the year to help the girls transition into the program. Now, honestly, our mentor, I don't want to diminish her efforts because she put a lot more time into that than three-hundred-and-sixty dollars, but she insisted on not taking any money for that. So, the total spend on the Teachers of Critical Languages Grant is six-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. So, to combine those two grants, it's six-fourteen. I just mentioned that the information from the previous slide puts it at approximately, and I always tend to round up the budget because it'd rather be safer, or overestimate something than under. So, we came up with twenty-nine thousand. We do have two out-of-state students from Oregon in the kindergarten program. They pay a tuition of five thousand dollars each. And we have collected from them the ten thousand. So, that puts the cost of the program, each year, including both grants and offset of tuition, at nineteen thousand for kindergarten and first grade. We have thirty-seven students in the program between the two grades. So, I broke it down, nineteen thousand divided by thirty-seven is five-hundred-and-thirteen dollars per student for the thirteen-fourteenth school year. This is what it potentially would look like next year. I say potential because we have not yet heard on the status of the grants. You should know that about a month. And again, this is the projection, so half of incoming kindergarters participated. I'm guessing around thirteen students. Would then put fifty students in the program for next year. And if you receive the exact same grants as current year, which you've been given a few clues to ask, we stand very good chance to get that money. So, next year, what it would look like, you would have kindergarten, first, and second grade as the students move up. Nineteen thousand dollars again for fifty students. Puts it cost at three-hundred-and-eighty dollars a student. That's assuming no new students came or actually left start the program. So, it'd be three-hundred-and-eighty dollars per student. We did ask our current students in the program how many intended to return, weren't sure, or were not going to return. We sent them on a simple form that said yes, no, and undecided. So, out of the seventeen kindergarters in the program, fourteen said yes. I should say the parents said, not the kids. We asked the parents. Seventeen, excuse me, send home seventeen. Fourteen said yes, they were going to stay in the program. Two were undecided, and one student indicated they were moving. First grade, there are apparently twenty students in the program. Same survey went home to them. Thirteen said yes, fourteen undecided. One no, one moving in, and one who did not get back. Okay, this is a diagram or floor plan of the building. If you look up by the light reflection or the shadow of the light, there are, it says almonds, this is where we're sitting right now. To my left, on the whole, this way, is the other venting wing, just to kind of get the layout on this map. It's actually heads right down toward the stage. At the top is the middle school, excuse me, high school wing, that way. Moving across the top of the page under the word space. And you do not see the middle school wing just through those double doors behind the door. And that is because I wanted to get this big enough to fit on the screen. Okay, so, let me get back over here. Everyone said, "Look at the screen," and not, "Oh, look at the screen." I don't want to blind anyone with this laser pointer. Okay. Okay, K, right there, I appreciate it. Oh, look at that. Oh, my God. A lot of our existing kindergarten class, people load up. On the left and left, you see, that says E S D, E C, K A P. Room one-twelve is our E S D, E C A P program, which I live in. It's actually not part of our school in the sense that that is an E S D program, and E S D is using our space for that. If you move on up above the K, you see open, that's room one-oh-six. That room is open in the morning, no one's in there. And then, K M means kindergarten MANDR classes in there from one to three P M. If you scoot on up ahead of that room, one-oh-two is our C B A, our virtual program, or our virtual school. I'm going to talk about that room a little bit later. Move across to one-oh-three and then up to one-oh-one. That room is open in the morning at seven-one M. That's when the first grade MANDR kids go from twelve to three. The other room we have available, and I'll explain this a little further about the next slide, is at the top under the word space. It's three-oh-two. You can see a little dotted line going through there. That's actually one large room. I drew arrows there to show that if necessary, that room could be divided. And currently, that room is used one to two hours a day in the afternoon. It's our horticulture class, and a lot of the time, they're outside. But they like today, they're probably doing woodwork. So, you, I don't, try to keep that visual in mind. I'll switch back and forth with itself, and sometimes it's not a good solution. But if you look at next year, so, school year fourteen-fifteen, we have three years in the MANDR program, kindergarten, one, and two. What you can see from the left side is there are rooms available either in the morning or different times of day that are not being used. So, don't feel that next year presents a problem with adequate room space. Second year, fifteen-sixteen, you have grades kindergarten, one, two, three. The other half of those rooms that are not used can still be available for that, so we don't see an issue there. Sixteen-seventeen, now, as you grow in the program of K one, two, three, four, now, the fourth grade needs a room. So, then, they could look at those available rooms. You have the E C A P room, and not that we would want them to go away. It's nice to have your feeder program in your school. The kids get familiar with the school, they learn where the buses are. But it is a room that we are essentially donating. So, it is a possibility, it may not be ideal, but it is a possibility. We have the C B A room, which is virtual education, which technically could operate out of a lot of settings. So, that's a possibility. And you have a large room that I showed at the top of the screen, where our horticulture class meets on occasion in the afternoon. So, I'll go back and show that, and give you another visual of what that looks like. So, room one-oh-six is available half the day. One-oh-one is available half the day. E C A P at the very bottom could be available all day. Room three-oh-two up at the top could be split or could be used for the morning at a minimum. Okay, if we go back to year seventeen-eighteen, you know, fifth grade, fifth grade would use the other half of the fourth grade room that the fourth grade room took. So, whichever one of those choices we decided upon, it would use the other half. And I say half just because MANDR program is half-time. So, half the day, they're in the rooms, and half the day, somebody, another grade would be in there. By eighteen-nineteen, now, we have grades K one, two, three, four, five, six. In the model that's been presented, K five does a half-day program, and the sixth grade attends what would be a typical, say, four-language class where a freshman might take Spanish one. You go to that class for fifty minutes a day. And in this model, the sixth grade would go to a class for an hour a day. So, when a class meets for an hour a day, they don't need a whole classroom. There are many teachers throughout the day in a given schedule who have what we call their prep or planning period. And so, there are several available rooms for an hour a day snapshot because different teachers are having their planning period. So, that takes it up in cases. When the seventh grade becomes an effect, it's the same model. They go to the class for an hour a day in an available room during the teacher's planning time. Okay, so, first of all, the disclaimer, and maybe you can read the fine print on this one, or maybe you can't. And I'm going to show some different costs for other programs. Now, this is not to say that we should drop the other programs or we don't value them. It's simply to show that every program that we offer has some kind of cost, and then to see what that looks like. And these do depend on education and experience level of the teacher. The teachers aren't paying directly out of the state's salary schedule. So, wherever they land, they get paid. The state gives us the money for that person. If it's a more expensive person, we get more money. If it's a less expensive person, we get less money. So long as we don't go over our state allowance or our staff. So, when you hear these big numbers, you have to realize that that's the salary plus the mandatory benefits. So, for the first example, and again, these are just scenarios. Teacher band, our band teacher happens to be at the top step. Now, this isn't what we pay him, if you remember. This includes the mandatory benefits. So, for us to offer a period of band is one-thousand-five-hundred dollars with the benefits. It's a fifty-minute class that rounding, in this case, to an hour a day. A little more simple. So, an hour band a day. Currently, we have nineteen students in the high school band. So, it's twelve-five divided by nineteen students. Means it costs sixteen-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars per student. That's for an hour band all year long. Now, that sounds like a hefty price tag, and we feel that band is very important. I know it's in a lot of subjects, not just music, also math. And so, you know, it's also we got to have a wider environment ready. Can we ask questions during this time?
Uh, sure. He needs a mic, I understand. My opinion is that Mr. King has a middle school band, and starts band in the fifth grade with, I don't even know what you want to call it. Of course. So, you have, if I didn't have any salary, why do you not have that in salary?
This scenario is to show cost per hour of different. I don't, I didn't go through every program in this school. I'm just picking a couple to kind of show the price of programs.
But that's not a true picture.
Well, this is for the high school band, the fifth grade would be middle school.
Well, why are you just doing high school? Because he's him on the just high school.
Right. I'm showing it per class. I mean, it could be anything. I could have picked chemistry, I could have picked P E, I could have picked volleyball. And I just picked a couple different things to kind of show the difference. Basketball, basketball program, we have two head coaches. Excuse me, head and assistant. Do have to drive the bus to the competition. So, for two coaches, seventy-eight-five, that's my typical season. The eleven-thousand-one-eighty, eleven-by-twenty is five-fifty-nine per player for that sport or season. We could have run any, any number of scenarios, and your point is well taken. We could have done an hour of a third-grade teacher or a shop class. Just to kind of show a smattering of, when you have a small school, you have to still cover all the subjects required for graduation that a large school would offer. If you use shaves, for example, their band teacher would make the same per hour or would cost the same per hour, but they have a hundred-plus students in their band, so it would be an expensive program for that. And not to pick on band, we don't want to cut these things. And this is not an example to cut anything. We have some classes with seven kids in them. So, a seven-student class would be seventeen-eighty-five per student. And we do spend a lot of money on our programs, and we don't, I, too, for myself, I don't have a problem with that because we do value those programs. And we want our students to have those opportunities. Okay, let's talk a little bit about the revenue side of things. We talked about the expense side of a few things. So, we get money from the state for our students. We call it apportionment, we call it revenue, we can call it income. It all kind of means the same thing in these scenarios. So, a full-time student generates sixty-three-hundred dollars from the state. So, I equated it per hour, you know, like the per-hour scenario seems easy as to equate. A typical middle school or high school student attends seven periods a day. So, if you take the sixty-three-hundred in revenue divided by seven, they generate nine-hundred dollars per hour or per period or per class, if you want to put it that way. Kindergarten students, kindergarten students only are paid for by the state at half the amount of a regular student. So, a kindergarten student generates thirty-one-fifty in revenue or apportionment per year. NISL provides all-day kindergarten. It's not a state requirement, and the state does not fund it unless you're a high-class district where the state wouldn't then fund kindergarten all day long, but that does not apply to NISL. So, NISL receives thirty-one-hundred-and-fifty dollars per student for the year. We have some out-of-state students, and there's been some discussion around that. The reason we chose five thousand dollars is because there was an R C W that says that when you have your bordering districts, you need to coordinate with the bordering district's goal district and, you know, be in compliance. So, because Astoria charges five thousand to its Washington out-of-state students, that is why we picked the amount. And our Astoria students, we have two kindergarten students here. I should say Oregon students, I think some of them live on the T side. They generate five thousand, and there are two. So, we get funded for thirty-one-fifty. And for those students, we are providing five thousand each. Now, for Washington, the first grader changes. When a student gets in the first grade, the funding changes in sixty-three-hundred dollars is what we receive. And if the student was out of state, it would be five thousand. And I'm not saying that couldn't change. I know there've been a lot of questions about, "Why did you do that?" Well, I did that to stay out of trouble. It may not have worked, but that's why I did that. So, what would this look like as we go forward? Now, there's a lot of ifs here, and I know this is kind of hard to follow, but the ifs hopefully will become reality soon as we find out about the grants. So, the first one is if we receive both grants again. And those are the ones I talked about in the beginning, the college board, and then we call it T C L P, E S teachers, the Critical Language. If we receive both of those, and our Oregon students stayed with us, it would cost again twenty thousand to now serve three grades. If there is no grants, there is another option, and you can get teachers through Michigan State, and those are master-level teachers. And the price for those teachers is forty-five thousand, including benefits. And that's considerably cheaper than what you would have to pay if you went out and hired a master-level teacher. If you hire a master-level teacher not through that program, the cost would be forty-five thousand plus benefits, which would put the cost at around sixty-two thousand. You have to add another thirty-five percent of the salary to come up with the total cost. So, the Michigan State would be a good option because you would get a master teacher, including benefits, for forty-five. If we kept the same model, our two Oregon state, Oregon students stayed with us, you would minus off the ten thousand for tuition, thirty-five thousand would serve the grades one and two. But we still have to set up the kindergarten. We would have, we would have three grades in the program next year. It's hard to just go get a half a teacher from somewhere that you don't really exist very often. So, another one would cost forty-five thousand, or, um, you can go on the clutter. Ninety thousand minus ten would be eighty thousand to the district. You could go back and apply for your T C L P grant, however, which if you remember from the beginning, that would cost to kind of fourteen dollars with some staff training. That one is virtually free. So, there are all kinds of different combinations and permutations for your math people that exists when you look at funding as progress. So, how do we move forward? Here are a couple possible suggestions. I want to give you best-case scenario and worst-case scenario. And the truth probably lies honestly somewhere in the middle because there are a lot of different kinds of grant and funding mechanisms out there that you can get. So, the first option, and I said, and there are many, but the first option is the district can commit to some minimum level of funding. And in this example, it's twenty-five thousand. Doesn't have to be twenty-five, it could be seven, it could be a hundred, whatever. But you commit to some funding cap, and then meet the rest up to outside sources, whether that's grants, whether that's commission, whether that's user pay. Some schools where their support programs, for example, have pay-to-play, so you could pay to converse type of things. Okay, like I said, user pay system, as in the case presented before. If you looked at the cost that was left after the grants, it was, you know, four to five hundred that the district kicked in. So, you could say, okay, parent would have to pay four to five hundred. You can look at the worst-case scenario and say, oh, there are no grants whatsoever, so what would one teacher cost? Well, it could cost forty-five thousand for a beginning-level teacher with benefits. It could cost sixty thousand for a more experienced teacher with benefits. And if you have thirty-seven students in the class, it could cost twelve-hundred and sixteen per student. So, you can see there's a, obviously, a lot of possibilities and a range of costs. I mean, ideally, you'd like to have your own staff so that it's not contingent upon grants. And when you hire someone, they can stay as long as you and they both want to. Some of these grants do have a time period on when the teacher is allowed to only stay one year. So, that does create some planning challenges. Another thing you can do is increase enrollment on either out-of-district or out-of-state students. One of the challenges in that is space issue. You saw that from the previous slides, you do have someone to grow. When your classes get into the thirties, typically, you divide them into two. So, when you divide, then you would occupy one of those rooms. And then, when they divide off for immersion, it becomes a lot more complicated with space. So, that is something to think about as the class sizes continue to grow. We have had considerably more students here in the past. Right now, our K twelve school was about two-hundred-and-seventy-three students. Years ago, we had three-hundred-and-fifty. Now, they weren't on the one grade difference either. They were spread, you know, throughout. But we do have some room for growth. The top slide, I kind of already established, but we do feel for our teachers of these big classes, it is not easy to have thirty-two, thirty-three kids in a class. The rooms aren't that big, it's a very avenue, the space, you know, is small, it's tight. And so, it does present some challenges. We are lucky to have immersion this year because in the afternoon, these classes do split. So, rather than thirty-two or thirty-three, there are sixteen and seventeen in the afternoon. Bullet number two talks about, what does this look like at the worst-case scenario? If you had no grants, no extra funding, you could be spending a hundred-and-thirty-five to two-hundred-and-forty thousand a year by the time the program reaches fifth grade. So, that, at that point, if you serve the sixth grade, it's K one, two, three, four, five. And if you had no source of income, the price would range, obviously, based on, you know, teacher experience for those programs. You could continue on like we have and receive grants, and it could cost the district less than twenty thousand. It could make money even if you opened the doors and filled all the available space. So... So, I know we might have concrete answers, but we don't have a crystal ball. We can't tell you if we're going to get this or that grant or five grades down the road. I can say it's hard to plan, not knowing the future. And it's a lot easier to go out and ask for someone, ask for money when there's much more of a definite plan in place. And one thing that I don't think we've spent enough time talking about is, what is the value of vibrancy and standard-grade brand? So I know we might have concrete answers, but we don't have a crystal ball. We can't tell you if we're going to get this or that grant of ivory down the road. I can say it's hard to plan, not knowing the future. And it's a lot easier to go out and ask for someone, ask for money when there's much more of a definite plan in place. And one thing that I don't think we've spent enough time talking about is what is the value of vibrancy and expanded-grade gratitude for these students? And that also has a monetary value. Now, it's definitely hard to quantify and qualify, but I don't think anyone doubts the value of being bilingual. And so that's something that needs consideration too. It's been said that in a lot of cases, struggling learners really don't thrive in these programs, but our observations will tell us differently, and we have actually seen just the opposite. We've seen more engagement from these students than we typically would see. I guess you could call that somewhat anecdotal, but at some point after you see it, your eyes have not been anecdotal before. So this, you know, wasn't an attempt to necessarily solve anything. It's just to lay out what it looks like, what we spend, what are some possible considerations for the future? And, you know, what are some other options? And again, you know, every program has a price, and we don't want to cut any of them. That's it for my part, and we don't have to sign up for other comment, obviously, because this is a meeting just about that. So if anyone else wants to speak, we have one mic, two. Two working mics now, I have a couple students who are volunteering to help run mics back and forth. If you'd like to say something, it probably would be a good idea for you to identify yourself, because there are some places in the room, I don't know, there's probably, you guys probably don't know each other either, so. If you want to say something, just raise your hand, and one of these lobbies will run over to you.
I can comment this. And as she said, when you usually get up, there are over thirty kids in a class, it's split up. So my thought is, if you're gonna have, like they have over thirty kids in a kindergarten class, next year they'll be in first grade. You're gonna have to split to get another teacher in. That's my thought.
Where's Lisa?
She's hiding over here.
Lisa, where are you? Oh, there you are. Lisa, before we get into a lot of other questions and statements that I know people have. Diana Jovic. Auntie Grace, as the superintendent, what do you want? I mean, you did a great job laying all this out and answering lots of questions. I personally, and I'm sure everybody in this room would like to know, what do you want as superintendent?
First, I'd like to see a win-win situation for everyone. And frankly, I don't know if that's possible, but I would like to work towards that in my personal vision.
I, you know, I, I think there's doubt, I didn't hear you.
Did you hear the mic?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, now I can. I'd like to see a win-win situation for everyone. And what that looks like, I don't know if we have the hands to do, but hopefully I can figure that out.
Okay, I think I have my question. I'd like to address bullet number four, which is why I came tonight and found, oh, I'm sorry. My name is Robin Andrea. I used to work in the district, and I love it. And I love the kids here, and I wanted them to have this opportunity. To break out this program wherever we go, and everybody says it's a feather in our cap that we have. But with regard to bullet number four, the value of vibrancy, this goes far beyond just learning another language. There are, we have other languages here, and I can tell you, as a Russian language major myself, studying any language is going to help you learn your own language in much more detail, and that pays off. Believe me, that pays off. There is another little discussed value in learning another language. And if I could use a computer metaphor here. Language, if you research it, is a meta-program. And actually, the processing that you do as you read and write, regardless of the content, has effect on your brain, how you think. And our language and many other languages are alphabetized. There's, it is left and right, black and white, sequential. Chinese and Japanese differ from that. And they're, the kids are already learning, my man and my granddaughter is in there, she's already learning symbols. And those symbols are images. Not necessarily, some of us left, right, you know, and black and white, but it's not letters. And it affects how people process. And I know this is gonna pay off with my, my man. It's going to affect her in such a way that she has two operating systems that use a computer for them. Most countries around us start teaching language in kindergarten, they watch in school, they're learning a second language already. And we're far behind in that in terms of our general population. We were starting at exactly the right time. It is a huge benefit for her future learning. And you will see that play out, I have no doubt. And as Lisa said earlier, you know, her anecdotal evidence is that those kids thrive. And so there is tremendous value in learning a language like Chinese. And we're very thankful that you're here, I'm thankful that you're here. So that's my question.
My name is Mary Jane Anderson. My husband and I both grew up here in Nusell, we both graduated from here. My husband went off to serve in the United States for a quarter, he served in Operation Iraqi Freedom. He currently serves in the Army National Guard. We is a military family, we love our country, and we take pride in the gifts that come along with being an American, such as the ability to choose whatever kind of education we want for our children. I wanted to take this opportunity to share with the board and the community what this Mandarin program has meant to our family. Our son's name is in the first grade this year, and I have to say that his ability to afford to this program has been nothing short of amazing. He even has our two-year-old speaking and learning right along with him. He's excited to learn and to share what he has learned with all of his family. He's excited, hardworking, proud, and eager to learn, and this program has boosted his confidence immensely. He has become, and he surprises me every day. I feel blessed that my son and other children, this small world, to be given this opportunity. The world is evolving, and it is important, and it's important to make sure that we give our children the best academic programs that we can. I have seen this program bring the community together, families are working with each other that might not have ever prospered otherwise, all with the same objective to make this school a better place for all children. I understand that are concerned with the program, but that is natural with anything new that we do. The benefits of being bilingual are endless in comes. It opens up completely, a completely different part of the brain. People that are bilingual tend to be more efficient in problem-solving, more aware of the world outside of their own, and not to mention helps them communicate. I think it's important to maintain a relevant, stable environment in the school for our children. They have, they are after all the future of America. Having innovative programs in our school only helps open the doors for other opportunities. I thank the administration for this program, and I ask that it be allowed to continue to flourish. I can only speak for our family, and I know that my child would be devastated if this gift that has been given to him was so quickly taken away. This program is special. This is a special program that so far has been nothing but successful in so many ways. We have great groups of parents willing to do whatever is necessary to help sustain the program. The teachers are wonderful and have shown immense amount of dedication to their work and to the students. My son will never forget his teacher Ling Lao Shir, and I will always be grateful to her for the dedication which she has shown to my son, along with all of his other teachers. And I just want to also mention that we have, and we have seven or eight students that are gonna be competing at the end of this month in a competition in Seattle. And they are amazing to watch, their progress, and just to show the board that we have, our parents are completely dedicated to it, as long, as long as, also with our children, so.
If I could, I have a mic now. My name is Mike Weston, I'm the executive director of Board Astoria. I live in Astoria, one of our daughters, one of two children that cross the river every day to attend this program. Just to give you a little history about myself, I fought in two wars and about three or four conflicts. My previous life was as a United States Navy SEAL. So I can tell you about diplomatic purposes and the homeland security purposes of this. And I brought a little plaque here today, and this is a plaque that I got when I was in the military. There's about twenty people in this plaque. And on this plaque, I'm in this photograph, and there's only one person in this photograph that's not expendable. And that's the ambassador. The only reason that he's not expendable is because he can speak the language in that country. So if that doesn't tell you the purpose of the homeland security, I don't know what could. I just want to say, like, as a veteran, this program means so much. One of our biggest competitors in this global market is China. And from a board perspective, if I had an American, an American-looking individual that could speak Chinese, the value of having that person sitting in the same room with me, they don't even have to speak Chinese, I just want them to listen to the conversations that are going on. So that way, after that meeting, I can come up and say, what were they saying? Because I can't speak Chinese, and it's a huge disfavor, a disservice to what our country can actually become of it. And I'll tell you right now, particularly for jobs in your local economy, our biggest traitor right now is China, Korea, Japan. I would hire tomorrow a Chinese-speaking individual at sixty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars a year. And that's in your local economy, right here. So your children, if you are putting through this program right now, when they graduate this program in ten, fifteen years, they're gonna be working at the ports up and down this coast, because that's where we're trading with. Not only that, if I'm gonna pay sixty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars a year, what's Nike gonna pay? What's Google gonna pay? What's Yahoo gonna pay for these kids? I mean, think about the value of this program. Now, Lisa mentioned that if we open up our doors a little bit, this program can actually generate revenue for us. And Lisa can probably talk to you how that works. But I know from being across that river as an ambassador of this program, we go over there, we tell our friends about it, they're all excited about it. This is a great program, you guys have going there. You don't really understand what you have, the value of this program is astronomical. And on that bottom line, opening up vibrancy, it activates a whole other section of the brain that you don't even get any activity to after the age of ten if you don't learn the programming at an early age. And just by learning a little bit at an early age, it opens up the ability for you to learn a different language later on. You can learn four, five, six languages as long as you're learning a different language before you turn ten. Because once you turn ten and you're only focused on English, all those synapses are closed to you. And you'll never get them back, and you'll always be struggling. That's my two cents, thank you.
Hello, I'm Chloe Zimmerman, I'm a high school student here in Nusell. And I was asked to present, and I actually did the end, and we don't, because over there we got signatures for a student petition just to show that the high school student body, we actually have an A grade here too, that we support the program, and that it's something that when we were in school, we would have wanted and loved to have been a part of. So I'd like to just read the little paragraph that outlines what the petition is for. We, the students of Nusell, would like to express our strong support for the continuance of the Mandarin immersion program. We believe innovative programs such as this strengthen the academic performance of our students and will create expanded opportunities for our class of twenty-twenty-five and beyond. We recognize the future generations of high school graduates need to be able to communicate effectively with other nations, especially China, to advance the diplomatic, military, economic, political, and cultural interests of the United States of America. So this is what we had thirty-three students sign, and I will note that it did not go around all the classes, just for the sake of not interrupting high school class time. But we had very strong support. I can't think of anyone off the top of my head who refused to sign it or said they would not like to. So I would just like to say, there is not only community support for this, but also student support.
Hi, my name is Tato McHawsey. I have a son that's in the kindergarten class, he's first year in NACEL. I'm actually a South Bend graduate, three generations in South Bend. We decided to switch over to NACEL this year because of the Mandarin immersion program that was going to take place. This program is an amazing program for our students. We, we're an oyster farmer, so I'm in local bay, an oyster farming processing plant. And we do a lot of exporting, and all of our exports are currently going over to China. And this is a great opportunity, not only for our son, but for also kids that currently live and work here and want to come back to our area to be able to thrive in industries like the oyster industry, like the plant industry, like the timber industry that we all currently live in and work in, so they can come back, they can be bilingual, and they can also help raise our exports, or they can work in our current business environment and be able to have multiple languages underneath their belt to better have, to have a little better access to the world. We today are in a global economy. We're no longer just in NACEL, Washington, or South Bend, Washington. This is a global economy. And as it becomes more of a global economy, more languages are gonna be needed by our children in order for them to be successful. I'm, I'm actually bilingual, I started learning Spanish when I was knee-high to a grasshopper, because in our industry, there's a lot of Hispanics. So to this day, I'm fluent in the language, and it's opened up so many doors for myself, being able to speak another language. You actually think differently knowing two languages. It's a whole other part of your brain that, when I'm speaking in Spanish, I actually switch into another mode, and it's different, the way you organize your thoughts, the way you go about processing things, and it's absolutely amazing. And if our kids can tap into that, more power to them. The other part of this is not only for, for our kids, and they will tap into this brain trust that we've been talking about, but you're also gonna create a group of friends. So the problem with languages that I've seen in my, in my life is that when you teach a kid Spanish in high school, that kid retains nothing. They retain maybe a handful of words and that's about it. Because they don't live it, they don't speak it, they don't have friends that speak it, you know, they're not immersed in the culture. And if you're not immersed in the culture and learning the language, it just has a tendency to dissipate. So by starting off with kindergartners who are creating bonds and relationships with friends and getting to know what this culture's about, they're automatically sort of guiding themselves in their own little group. So as they develop into, you know, into elementary and they go into junior high and high school and college, they'll stay connected with people that have that same sort of thinking, and they'll continue their languages. And it'll be amazing to see our kids grow into this new little world. And also for parents to be able to link in and create new relationships because their kids are in another language together. I mean, it's, it's absolutely amazing. I immersed myself in the Spanish culture, and that's how I think about it, and that's how I felt a little bit. You know, it, it takes just that to become bilingual. You can't just take a couple of classes and then maybe you're tied in for life. You actually have to immerse yourself in the culture. And there's other people that we've been talking to, they're excited about this program, and are thinking about putting their kids into NACEL because of the out-of-the-box thinking that NACEL has done, and because of the that NACEL has done and because of the opportunities that they've brought for this rural area. I mean, we're a rural area. This is a great program for us. We're not in downtown Seattle, which this would fit perfectly in. We've got a great opportunity in a small community to come together and to have an amazing program for our children. So I would really like you to consider the benefit that this has for our youth, and if there's a cost that's associated with this, up to $5,000 to cross over the river, we're here for it, and we'll be willing to support the program financially if that's what we need to do.
Hi, I'm Luke Best. I have a granddaughter who is currently living with us and is now in the immersion program kindergarten. And at some other time, we've got a new kindergarten, I've got a, a ball player. She is a very active, very outgoing, very loving child, and just knows all the buttons to push for grandkids. But by the same token, she has a quest for knowledge. She has gotten into this program. She comes home and tries to teach me. She'll come home and go, "I'm not going to eat." "Hello, Grandpa Tony." And she's been trying to teach. My hearing is going, so I got a very difficult time picking up on the different sounds. But I also believe through this program, she is also taking piano lessons. She reads almost as well as some third graders I have met. It's a wonderful program. The teachers are very passionate. If they didn't teach them home, and she's quiet, she's not running up the wall, yelling and screaming, even if we didn't give her the chance to do it. But I also believe this program, when the teacher sees children, she influences them in this culture, they aren't learning a set document of good behavior or anything else. They're learning to expand their brain, to accept thoughts that must occur to them. And if you use an accent that you don't understand, they will pick up on it and go, "Oh, that's a great friend." I spent eight years in Germany. I talked German in class. I came home, and I can understand it. I can speak English. I can write it. But when she was first living with us, she has picked up conversational words and picked up Japanese words. She can count in Spanish. She counts in Chinese. She has a mother in Japan. Both his children from New Zeb Street have learned Japanese. The granddaughter in Japan, 13 years old, she was in a string quartet performing. In this performance, you can only get 30 points. She scored 10, Ruth scored 29. She has her life all laid out. She's going to the Air Force Academy. I have two sons that graduated from this high school. They have presented wonderful programs, giving the kids wonderful opportunities to experience. I've got one that's had 15 years in the Air Force, and one that's working on the Delta Force. I implore this board not to kick this program. It is such an opportunity to show the world.
Hi, I'm Laura Sut. And I think most of you know I've spent over 25 more years in real estate than this year. And something that's just so important to people when they're thinking about moving into an area is how's the school, what's going on at the school? And I think to have this great opportunity, I mean, this is cutting-edge stuff. For doing NACEL, trying to have this program is so awesome. And I've got a rookie, Lisa Marcela. She was their academy commissioner a couple of times. And she actually moved to Portland so that she could get her daughter into the Chinese immersion program. And she would love to bring her here, but she was worried because she's fairly, I just spoke with her yesterday, and she was really sorry she couldn't come to meet him tonight. But she said, "I, I, I'm already NACEL committed to doing this." Because if you're committed to doing this through sixth grade, then of course I'd rather have my daughter here. And she's from New Zealand. The only reason she didn't work in Portland is so that her daughter could go to the immersion program. And in Portland, the way it's set up, it's a lottery system. There's so many people applying for it, and they have to do it by lottery. And to, to have this go on here in NACEL is just so special that I, I just can't imagine anybody thinking about, you know, trying to, to not go through with it because this is just a really awesome program. And there's a couple of other thoughts. There's lots of like, they said, as soon as the word kind of starts getting out and the school district says, "Hey, we're committed to this. It's going to go on through sixth grade, we can go through sixth," then people would feel comfortable enrolling their kids here and get them started in the program. And so there is possibility for growth. But on the flip side of that, there are so many people now that are in this program and are so excited about it. Lisa said, Lisa Marcel, yesterday said, "You know, if NACEL accesses this program, I'm going to really work on the capital school district and try to get it going there." Well, you know, we could have students now that will lose students because they're going, they could go to the other school districts too. So then what happens? Then you lose $6,000 a year for all these students that, that are loving the immersion program. You might have to think about that and things too. Anyway, I, I really, really love the program, and I have red sons in the first grade program. It's pretty amazing to see it firsthand. Lisa also said to let you guys know she would be happy to meet with any first hand for her daughter, and she's in her second year now. And she said it absolutely just amazing how she's done now.
Hi, I'm Chloe Zimmerman, and I have daughters in high school here. I'm also a homeschooling parent, and homeschool, all of my girls, at least three, three, not three, 10. And still have one that's in junior high and homeschooling now. And when the immersion program was first presented at a school board meeting, I was listening to it, but wow, this is really progressive. This is something, as a homeschool parent, when I had my kindergartner and this was an option, I would have thought long and hard, even as if, I mean, I'm committed to homeschooling and I'm pretty hardcore about it for those people that don't be. I would have seriously considered enrolling my kids. We have a huge homeschool community in our area, and all of those kids, if this program is continued and there's commitment from the board and the district to continue it, you're going to draw people that you wouldn't have drawn normally, is my belief. Now, I can't give you numbers or names or anything like that, but I truly believe people that were thinking about homeschooling are going to stop and take note. Because it's not just about learning Chinese. It's how the learning develops. It's providing opportunities. It is just an endless thing that is amazing that our little town, I mean, it's amazing that they're, they're in school and at Washington Achievement. I mean, they are a whole other place. We have an excellent school. But just because we're a good school, does that mean we stop and don't try to still be progressive and compete in, in the world as it's changing? Instead of being behind the ball, let's get ahead of it. The immersion program is just about hitting ahead of the ball. It's a smart move. You need to think about what it's going to cost you if you discontinue this program because it is going to cost the district.
So my name is Crystal Weston. I'm one of the parents that has a kindergartner from a nearby South Bend. And there's a couple of things I want to talk about. I work as a resource development director at a nonprofit, and one thing that we might want to consider here is the fact that we already have these grants. So one thing when you're writing a grant, you want to make sure you're trustworthy. And if we pull out of this midstream and we go apply for any other grant or any other topic, the funders aren't going to like this anymore because no, no funder wants to have their project trashed midway through. I understand these are really competitive grants, and it takes a lot of work to bring more of those in, and you can get rid of it, you can't really get it back, and then work gets around these foundations and whatnot. It's a pretty small little community. They all kind of know each other. So I did want to bring that up. Additionally, I feel like this sometimes gets come across as something like only the smart kids are going to be able to do, or it's kind of a myth or whatnot. But I wanted to bring up the way, some people will mention the way Mandarin structure is different than the way English or other, like even Spanish or the Romance languages, like English with an alphabet. So if you have a learning disability for reading in English, you won't have that same learning disability for learning Mandarin because the way you learn to read is fundamentally different. So in English, you have to be able to decipher the phonetic clues, and in Mandarin, you're basically memorizing the symbols. And so like if you have a learning disability in one, you won't have it in the other because of your extraordinary unlucky making it double or something. So it's going to give those kids a chance who might, might, who might not excel in one area, it might give them a chance to be the top kid in another area. Get one more point. Yes. So the other thing is, some people said, like, why don't we just do Spanish? Because it's so much more common in our area. It's more useful. And as a Spanish teacher, I grew up knowing Spanish from my grandparents, and I never got a chance to learn it at school until I was in high school. So of course, I can't really read it that well, maybe second grade level. I can't write that well, and it breaks down usefulness. If you can't read and write, it don't taste you so far. But it is good still being able to speak it. I've gotten hired for positions that I wouldn't have otherwise by having that skill. But if you want to work with the public, Spanish has been a good bet. But if you want to do international trade, then Mandarin is the way to go, and it pays more.
Hi, I'm Rob Dolph, teacher at the school. I'm former, have been, and under different circumstances, my son probably would have been in the program. He's not right now. He's in kindergarten. He doesn't get the benefit of the program, which I don't think anyone's disputing with the program in the corner. He does have a dependent 30-plus kindergarten class. I don't think the argument here is about whether the program is worth the thought. The finances, I think, is the main issue. I have some concerns that if the school district's paying, and we mentioned that they will automatically divide it if it gets so big, they have, it has not been divided yet. But we've had plenty of time, we've got plenty of folks from the community in the school. It hasn't changed. Now, the $17,000 or $19,000 that we're putting in the program, well worth the value. Absolutely no worry there. That of their first year with no grants is not sustainable. We have a $500,000, $600,000 carryover. That's not sustainable. I think status quo is where we need to go with this thing. I think our new board, our new suit, our new whatever we have for John, needs time to figure out where this district should be going. I said this before, we need to certify our community because if we crush this thing because we think it's an anti-quan thing, we don't know. If we think it's a precious thing for some other reason, we don't know. And I would like the board and this district to spend some time healing with the community, figuring out what their wishes are. And I do not want a knee-jerk reaction with a new board who comes in thinking that that's what their job is supposed to do. Status quo. Give you guys some time to figure out what we should be doing. Give everybody here that's supporting this program a chance to come up with the finances and understand that it's a wonderful program if we can do about it.
Hi, I'm Holly Prino. We have a kindergartner in our building, and she's just, I mean, she's been, we cut a hundred, she's copping herself in the end. It's just, she's ruined. But one thing I wanted to touch on, do you have a thought about, growing that in one office in years, and one of the ways that we came up with funds is to get sponsors in the community. And so I would just want to bring up that if possible, you know, $20,000 isn't a whole lot to set companies. And you get sponsors, you got to support.
Thank you, Holly. And just to, my name is Holly Mankin. I have a son in kindergarten. My family's also been fortunate enough to be the host family for teaching Tina, and that's been a fabulous experience for us. A little bit about myself, I, in my former life, I worked in Silicon Valley. I was a technology executive for a number of private companies that had gone public. And I have spent a lot of my professional life raising money in the private sector. I've never seen such a good investment as this. I welcome the opportunity to go out and raise tens, hundreds, thousands of dollars for this program. I think as I was very involved in providing funds for this year, that I feel very confident that we have the traffic for fundraising. We have a motion, which in the language community and funding communities is golden. We have the only one of the TCRP schools that currently have full funding that is immersion. That places us right at the top. We can pretty much guarantee in the next week that we're going to be at the semifinals, and then in the next month, we're going to be at the weekend of that full funding. The, one of the ideas that has come forth in the last couple of weeks is having a 501(c)(3) Mandarin immersion program. That would be a legal legitimate way to have your parents and encourage the public to participate, to build a Gates Foundation, to, even Department of Defense is now starting to support what they call critical languages as early as AIGR fire. There's wealth of money to be raised out there. We're immersion, we're small, we're rural. Some of the things that I've heard work against the program actually are some of our biggest assets. People want to fund small rural areas over city schools because they see city schools and few kids already having a lot of opportunity in the regular world around them to interact with people that are from different countries. Here in a rural environment, something like this gives us the opportunity to bring the world to our students. Thank you.
My name's Rachel Smallman, and I have a second grader who is currently a student here, and I'm very disappointed that he was not able to participate in this program, his favorite program. I do have a four-year-old who will I do have a four-year-old who will begin kindergarten next year, or the following year. And I'd be very disappointed if this program didn't continue to come forward, if they're starting it and hopefully teaching us and my son as well.
Do you have a chance to address the board on this call?
Um, yeah. The board is here just to basically be listened to. If we're not here for any decision or any kind of action, we really want to hear from the community. So, you know, we don't really want to get into, you know, a big discussion, we just want to hear from the people.
My name's Karen Ratack, and I don't have any children in the school. But I'd still like to speak as a taxpayer. I'd like to back up what Rob Dalton's saying. This is a grant distribution board. They have a lot of work to do to get going again. The bond didn't make it. And I agree with Rob, but he only can do with the community. We have to figure out where to go with our physical plan. We also have to support all of you. You know, amazing amount of encouragement and support and love for the program. My hope is that we will take that and form our own leadership group, bring a financial plan that says, looking at these as numbers, this is what we are willing as parents to pay to have our kids continue on the program. Couple of people spoke up and said we'll pay. Yes, there are sponsors available, but a grandma or grandpa, you're going to help the kids pay. So for you to come together and create your own leadership group that comes to the board and says, we're doing our own work, we're raising money, we're going to be here to help you, we're not just looking to you to do it all yourselves, I think will really help them feel more comfortable. I know being elected official is not fun. And you're either loved or hated. And I just really want to applaud Rob for speaking, what he was saying, that if all these kids come that want to come, are you going to put a cap on it? Are you going to have a lottery system, as was mentioned? If the program continues to grow, you are the founders, you parents are the founders of this program. You can do your own vision, you can do your own planning, you can do your own fundraising, you can do whatever you want to do. I applaud the idea of the 501(c)(3). I'd like to see one developed for the school as a whole, that has immersion component to it, and not just a separate one for the emotion program. Because this is a very small community and a school district to support a couple of 501(c)(3), so that's a great idea. And then grants could come in for all the programs here. I just want to applaud you for your energy, your commitment, your enthusiasm, and your belief in the program. And I want to encourage you to take that work together, create some ideas on the funding, and create some plans on how you can see it going forward if the worst-case scenario happened, if the best-case scenario happened, how you would be willing to assist the board in those funding ideas. As long as you look within and look with that worst-case scenario, like Rob says, that's going to be horrible. Horrible for everybody. So for you to come up with some backup ideas on funding is fabulous. I want to encourage you to do that work together, create some leadership, and assist the board. Your love for the program is obvious, and I applaud you for it.
I'm a white girl, I live on the border coast, so we love the mountains, it's part of our home. I really don't have a whole lot to say other than just a question. We do, as you're asking, we do these things, will we have your support? That's why everybody's here. I mean, that's the objective. If we come up with a plan, if we show you, hey, here's how we get the money, and the part of the problem getting the money is we need to know that there's going to be a program. We kind of prefer the card for the force. And that's what we're looking for, that's why I'm here, that's why I want to hear what your thoughts are, that's why I wasn't speaking, that's why I was watching your faces as people were talking, to see what kind of reactions you had, to see if there was any emotion, to see if there was any excitement about this. And I'm looking for some kind of response from you to say, yes, community will hear you, people will hear you, and if you can show us how the money's going to be there, and start to show those things, we're sticking by it, we're going to support it. That's what I'm looking for from you guys. And that's why I look for your time. Because where do you stand? Are you behind it, or are you not behind it? You know, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for.
My name is Kate Warner, and I came tonight with a sheet of questions. I have not been an outspoken advocate for or against this program, but I've had the questions, and as a taxpayer, they've been pretty, pretty strong. Last week, just by chance, I met a lady named Astoria, who found out I was from Mexico, and she explained to me how excited she was that her son was coming here from seaside. She was so excited, and had such good things to say about how her son has, his learning abilities have increased since he's been here. And maybe take a look. Most of my questions tonight have been answered by these people who have spoken very outwardly to me, and have a heart desire for this program to continue. I also agree with Rob Dalton and with Karen Ratack, that the board needs to consider the facility, and that our own children, who are not in this program, continue to receive the education that they have been receiving. It's a wonderful school district. We've been here since nineteen sixty-five, and we brag at least once or two to somebody about this district. So I would acknowledge the board tonight, too. I know you're not going to make a decision, but you've heard some people speak here tonight who really have their heart in this program, and I know that if they needed to make a third pocket up there. And so I just ask you to seriously consider it, and it's been said. And as a senior citizen, I'm beginning to see that I'm making a change in my attitude.
Hi, my name is Stacy Meyer, and I'm a high school student, middle school student, and I have a granddaughter that's in the pre-kindergarten program here. And I've been in very many states with my kids with schooling and education. I hadn't heard anything about this program until tonight, and just hearing it and knowing what's going on, I'm excited for my grandchildren to be a part of it. I've lived in Alaska with my oldest daughter, Russian, and it became very, very important to her. She was able to actually travel to Russia during her high school years up there with her cousin. And learning different languages made it so much more of an open industry for businesses and jobs and everything out there. And I have not made any money, but if this was something that I needed to help with to keep the program going, I don't plan on moving. I would definitely do whatever I could to help. I don't think that people come out and live in a country like this and expect to move as much as I have in the past. This is where I want my great kids to become rooted. And the only way that I think my daughter will wise up is if she feels that the programs of the school are still at the high standards that she had. And I've got a tenth grader, seventh grader. My seventh grader and my pre-kindergarten granddaughter are both a little bit hyper, and they have a lot of learning disabilities on their own. If it wasn't for my seventh grader and his workload and all the people that have worked with him last year, he wouldn't be a seventh grader this year. And my pre-kindergarten granddaughter is extremely intelligent and has been through a lot of life-altering things again in her four years already. And her to be allowed to learn this program and do it, I can't imagine how smart and how awesome that would be for her. And letting my daughter know what I've learned here tonight may end up helping her decide whether or not she's the one who can buy the house she's in and stay with her kids. So I do believe you have a hundred percent community strength behind you in making the proper decision here.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Can everybody hear me? Can you hear me back there? Okay, so, first of all, this, this district and this board, first of all, this board is very new, all right? You know, we're still trying to get our thoughts together as a board, where we, where we stand on it. So I would hope that, that you as taxpayers would appreciate this board really taking a good look at this, and not going down a road of getting the district in some kind of a financial situation that would be detrimental to the district, first of all. Okay, so, having said that, I think that it is a good program. I don't think there's any doubt that it's a good program. You know, our concerns are the financial concerns and the facilities concerns. Obviously, if we bring more kids in, it would help on the financial side, and then we end up with a facilities issue. And I don't think anybody can argue that. I mean, Lisa did a nice job of showing the facility, we do have some room, but we don't have a lot of room. Okay, so, as we go through this, if it is to go forward, we have to consider all of these different facts. Now, it would be easy just to say, yeah, let's just do this, but there has been no long-range planning. When this started, there was no long-range plan. It kind of just started, and we hoped that it was going to work. But we need to see a long-range plan in order to make a good decision. These are very reasonable people that sit on this board. We have a vast amount of experience and knowledge on this board. I don't think anybody on this board is here to kill this program. But we are concerned for the district, and that is our concern. That's what you people voted us into this position, to have the district's concern in mind. So that's the task that we have. Now, this district is going through a lot of changes. We have, we have people that are moving on, such as John Dean Harris is going to be the superintendent of South Bend, and I'm wishing well there. John learns a lot of hacks. We've got to figure out how we're going to maneuver through that. Lisa's got her hands full, Karen's got her hands full. There's a lot of things to work through. So this is a crucial crossroad right now. There's a lot of things to take care of. Immersion is one of them, okay? And so there's a lot of things to work through, so you must understand that we need to be very careful in how we make this decision. The grants are important, but we can't rely on the grants, we all know that. Grants change, funding changes. I appreciate everybody's enthusiasm for the program. It's an amazing outpouring of support for it. So, you know, basically, that's what I can tell you right now. Okay, because as the board, we're taking input, we need to make a decision based on that. So all the information that was provided tonight is very helpful. And I don't know, I mean, we weren't really going to make much of statements tonight, other than what I just said, pretty much. And I would have no problem if the rest of us, they'd like to say a few things. But, you know, we have an important decision to make, along with a lot of other important decisions to make this year. We're really at a crossroad right now, and really have a lot of things to work through. So I'd appreciate if you would understand that this board is new, and I think it would be negligent to not take a good look at the financial and the facilities impact on this, on this district. So...
Can I ask one question? I would just like, my name's Emily Lister, and I have a son in first grade class, and I would just like, I think I can speak on behalf of a lot of us, before you make a final decision, I would like a timeline and a dollar amount that needs to be raised. Because I think that there's enough of us here that could come together, before you just kiboshed it. I would, I think, you kind of owe a test.
Well, and we'd like that, too.
To just like, you have a timeline and a dollar amount. And if we had a timeline and amount that we need to raise, I think that the energy in this room, probably, I would...
Never.
Yeah, so that's just what I asked.
I don't think I need a mic, I have a bigger mouth. Take it my cue from you, doll. And you actually, I want to reference some of your comments, because I do agree with the things that you said. I have to admit, I do struggle with the board's demands of the parents to come up with the financial plan for this. Now, I understand that this has got to be the biggest group of parents I have ever seen involved in this school. And I was on the board for eight years. I mean, we were trying to find volunteers, we were trying to get people to come to board meetings. You know, I even offered candy bars as one of my campaigns. That didn't work. But this is an amazing amount of parents. I would have loved to have had my kids' generation of parents this involved with their class. So that is amazing, and I do, I applaud all of you parents. But I have a hard time understanding why they're being asked to come up with the financial answer to this. Where's Lisa? Did you not hire a superintendent to come up with that? So I would like to encourage the board to review what your role is as the board, and what her role is as a superintendent to run this school. And I'm a little fearful hearing that, that these comments, because I feel as if you guys are overstepping some of your responsibilities as the board. I know you had a workshop, I know that you, you're working on goals and stuff, and I know you've got tons of things to do. I can't have better than anybody in this room. But you have a superintendent whose job it is, is to figure out that, come to you guys with the plan, with the confidence that you're going to be able to say, yes, we agree with this, we're going to support it, or no, go back to the drawing board, it's not going to work. That's what I want to put out to the parents in this room.
I'd like to actually remind everyone here that we're at least one administrator down right now, okay? For a lot of different reasons, and I'm not going to go into any of those reasons. Lisa has her hands full, trust me. Karen has her hands full. John has his hands full. We're doing everything that we can. And again, yeah, maybe there's some more that the board could do. Okay, we've met two or three different times now, this board is more committed than what the last board was, as far as doing workshops and trying to work through this. But I think that we need to be a little bit careful to criticize Lisa and the administration, because they are working their tail off. Thank you. So that's as mad as I'm going to get right now, because I know how much work these ladies put into this, and John. Okay? Anybody else that would like to speak? Yes?
I'd just like to say, if I can get one year of Mandarin immersion for my child, it was worth it. If I can get two years of Mandarin for my child, I'm in heaven. If I, if I'm able to get through five years of Mandarin for my child, we've, we've got the golden future, you know?
I have a microphone.
Go.
This is Karen again. I get quite a bit of just curiosity, looking on the websites around Chinese immersion program funding. And what I discovered was that over and over and over again, parents pay the program. They may not pay the full cost, but they pay a certain amount. Years ago, when I lived in the big city of Seattle, I discovered that in school systems up there, if you want the kid to play football, you better be willing to forfeit the money, because the parents paid for the uniform. If you want your kid to play in the dumpster, you better be able to have the instrument. And parents were just all over the place, raising money for the German club, or the French club, or whatever club. So I don't think it's necessarily fair to say that the school board has to be responsible for finding every penny to support the program that the parents are excited about. What I see here is potential for you to say, look, we can come up with this much, how much would that help you? How much more do you... How much more would that help? And you're right, give us a timeline, give us a plan. But this was kind of jumped in their laps. There wasn't a long-range plan, but landing in the original plan of this program. We had an opportunity, we jumped on it, and we're all thrilled to have it. But I do think it's fair to say, okay, if you love it this much, how much are you willing to put into it? Are you willing to pay for your kid to be in a program? And if you have two or three kids, and that gets to be pretty expensive. And if you could afford to pay for your child through third or fourth grade, would that be something you'd be willing to do? I mean, you all have to figure out, how much, how much do you love this program? If the school can go halfway, then we go halfway. Those kinds of things. Just do, do what you can to help the school board make a good decision, and don't sit and wait and you take the seat of honor on that.
My opinion to each other, I just would like to know if that financial information of this proposal, that our proposal is available to us, so that we can actually work together.
I could say that you...
That'd be awesome.
Everything you see...
And I'm over here ready to make a note, but I thought it's...
Yeah, everything you see here tonight is absolutely brilliant. And, you know, we would love to work through this. Just have to make sure that we have the best interest of the district in mind. We have to make that happen. And that's our job, to make sure that that's gonna happen. With the kids, with the taxpayers, and everybody involved. Yes?
I completely understand your point on the administration being stretched thin and the new board, and I think those points are extremely valid. Would a middle road and a reasonable solution for everybody be when you vote on this program on March 18th, to extend the program for one year, conditional on full funding for next year, either from the grants or from the parents? Because even if it was only one year, I think what you're hearing is that we would also go forward. That would buy everybody the time to get up to speed, that would give us additional time for fundraising, and then to sort of lay out the funding. It would seem to me to be a reasonable way to have everybody kind of calm down on it.
And I wanted to add that I know it sounds like there's all this difficulty behind the scenes, but when the kids are in school, they're doing great. Like, everyone's doing a great job ultimately. So whatever problems there are, the classrooms are going great. So, I mean, something's working here for everyone. And the other thing is, this theoretical parents paying money thing, in some cases, is already happening. Some of those of us across the river, we kind of shut our mouths last year so that we weren't sure our kids would get a slot, since we weren't sure how many openings there would be, and we wanna make sure we got one. So I know you might not wanna grow too big, and maybe, you know, they're providing some kind of policy for how many kids are allowed in or whatnot. But I mean, like, the demand is there, like, we didn't market it at all. So, um, so yeah, just wanna say that.
I think it's important to try to forecast how many kids we can actually handle with the amount of room that we have. Have to have a little room for growth possibly just in our own community. And to try and project that out throughout, you know, K through Y. So that when we get to, you know, year, what, 10, 11 of this or whatever, if we get to that point, we don't all of a sudden realize that, oh my gosh, you know, we made a mistake there, and now we rejected this, and we don't have room for these kids or program enough rooms to put, you know, each class in each place. So there's a lot to consider in making this work right now.
Well, I guess I'm just thinking that we don't know what... Hi, George, can I get... We don't know what's gonna happen in 10 years. So, I mean, I'd rather see you guys make a decision based on what is really good for us now and next year and commit to moving forward than to make a decision to... It's so scary to think about what's gonna happen in 10 years, because we don't know. I mean, we just truly don't. Has somebody mentioned, you know, Lisa, that when I was on the board, I think that the population was around 330. We've housed more kids here. And now the population's way down. So, I mean, things fluctuate, they just do. But I think we need to make decisions based on what's the best thing now and how to go forward. And then also, I guess I have a question. It was my understanding that the grant is in place for next year, isn't it?
We're waiting to hear your comments, but it's a fight for your security. I mean, we should hear in the next two weeks if there's a screw-up in the operating, yes?
Right, so if that grant is in place, then I agree with someone who mentioned earlier it would be, I think, is horrible to cancel the program that the grant is in place for next year. I think the thought to just move it one year forward allows us to see if the grants are gonna keep coming in and what funding parents can come up with, it's just always gonna make sense to me.
Laurie, when you were on the board, were we still in two facilities or still where you're already at? Were you already both on them? Okay.
Let's wait for a second. Our son, Neil, he's in 10th grade, he's in 11th, and he's in fifth grade at Huron Elementary. And he's in modular, typically for classroom rooms for this school. So there are alternatives to just the actual physical structure that we have here. I'm on the foot bank where it's seaside. And right now, we're looking at a facility for that. And we're actually getting the OMAs, or those from Cannon Beach, which are just now closed, don't need it. But we had looked at the cost of those, and for a reasonable-sized facility, modular, it's about $75,000 put onto the spot. So it's not, it's not a tremendous cost to add additional space such that it becomes necessary. If you're lucky enough to be that successful. So I encourage you not to let that stay in your mind.
So you can stop and make a decision by March 18th, is that correct?
I think it would be nice to hold up for her.
Yeah, 'cause it seems like any decision before you know half the month if you have the money or not seems a little worth coming. You should probably wait and see if you have the funding for it, and then try and decipher what decision you're gonna make on the program. And based on the timeline that you give the parents, that also gives us some time to come up with some funding, whether or not, however much the grants fall short or whatnot, to be able to support this next year and then put together a plan for upcoming years.
I think that Lisa would probably know the timing probably better than you. When they're not gonna be...
Whether the timing was set up, so if the date was still around the 18th, you had to make a decision on it, so you don't even know when the funding's coming in, what the deadlines are for the funding, and then the deadline for you guys to make the decision. So the parents kind of have a game plan of what do we need to have to get something rolling for this next year. Do you need immediate funding that's gonna supply this next year? And we can also get the other long-term plan. And if somebody said that this is the biggest group of parents that's ever been here, so that to you guys should be great. Do you have parents that are willing to help and that are interested in helping and coordinating with you guys on your budget problems or on your space issues? I mean, so this, you guys should be thanking us, and should be very excited to have this many people that are willing to interact with you and also alleviate some of your guys' stresses on a program like this. I mean, imagine what else we could do if we had interest in things. Oh, thank you.
I'm gonna vote for you no matter what you're running for.
She goes two languages. Three, four, you go.
Last week, the manager approved that April 40th. We should know this week if we're finalists, and it takes a couple, two or three more weeks to know if it's a brochure. We have had some good information from the grant agencies that make us, and we will get those grants. So we're pretty confident that that will happen. And in my estimation, the decision does not have to be made on the March 18th meeting. But I think what I'm hearing is, the sooner the better. But we need to know when we're gonna get those grants, because that would be the risk of funding.
You might have another problem in about another four or five years in that number of people that come to these meetings might be four or five times as many. Instead of having 75 parents here, you might have 700 parents here. That might be a problem.
How long in terms of...
Hi, I'm Alan, I'm a little mixed, I'm a global veteran husband. I have a student who's in major immersion program. I've been silent this whole time because I've just been absolutely overwhelmed by Alex's comments. I didn't feel like there's much I could really add. One thing that occurs to me, though, is that two problems have been identified. Two primary problems for this program have been identified primarily by the board. One is financial, and one is facility debt. Pretty accurate. It seems to me that the best problem we could ever have is that we have too many kids coming into our school. It seems like one of the biggest problems we actually have is not enough students here. That's why the roster of the school went away. And a program like this, they can draw students. Yes, it'll cause growing needs, but that's, that's the kind of pain we want. We wanna grow up. The other thing is that more students equals more money. I mean, we get paid per head. One of the problems we have to maintain the facility that we have is that we haven't had enough students, enough heads to count in order to get all the funding we could get to maintain our facility. So I don't see those two problems as problems we don't wanna have.
I'm Chris Dorman, I'm sure they probably figured I was gonna speak at some point tonight, but I would just like to echo...
Can you speak out something in all right tonight, your voice is announcing the parking?
Yeah. So I actually don't have much of an opinion about the program. I don't have a child attending the program. I really appreciate all the passion in this room of tonight, and I certainly am always in favor of offering as many bested programming as we can offer as a school district. The numbers of breaking it down by hour per youth feels really irrelevant to me if the community feels like there's value to offering that as an option to the kids. So I don't put too much praise in that per hour, per year number. One of the suggestions that I think that was made, and this is just my feedback to the board, is that I'm hearing kind of some time-sensitive dates and whatnot. And I would hope that, given the weight and the considerations in this room around this particular subject, that it's, that it's not a constraint of time to arrive at that, because it is a very important decision in terms of the long-term commitment. Earlier, a recommendation was made, I thought it was actually fairly reasonable, and that is, is that if the resources are there to support this next fiscal year, this next student year, to be able to go ahead and continue that program with the ongoing effort of long-range planning, at least maybe whether it's planning or whether it's just simply mapping out all the variables, so that there's contingency planning around the source of funding. What do we do if this happens? What do we do if that happens? A well-thought-out process, considering all the variables, and I think it has to be a collaborative approach. I know one citizen said earlier, they recommended a leadership team be developed and a financial plan be developed from that group. I do agree with Deanna. I think it has to be the responsibility, though, of the district, the board, whoever that is, representing the district, and this particular team of families. And to me, what I've experienced in terms of just some information I've gathered over the past few weeks or month, because I don't know anything about this, it sounds like there's different interpretations of money. What one person considers a revenue, someone else considers an expense. What someone considers an expense is not really an expense, it's a shortfall that can be made up here and there. I think the most effective effort moving forward is for the district, whoever that is, and for the community to somehow be able to come together and reach some common ground and shared understanding as to what dollars and cents mean. So to get, if you have a shared definition for the dollar. Otherwise, my theory is, is that people will try to, they'll try to create their argument in terms of what this dollar means. The district or someone else might create their argument of what this dollar means, and it's gonna be a rough road ahead. So I would just encourage that collaborative approach, and that it would be time-driven. I would hate to think that a decision would be arrived at in like one month from now. Even if the funding's in place, I mean, one month, it doesn't sound like a lot of time, and there are so many things that are going on in this district. A lot of things, especially with its leadership. And I think with respect to that climate at this time, you would want to buy yourself some more time to give the full weight of this program and its consideration from each side.
Hi, Chloe's in Berlin again. I would just like to speak on behalf of, as a student representative. I see not, I know this is a community, and the majority of the community is adults, but this is also a school, and kids go in here for our students. So from a student perspective, if I may, what I'm seeing is lots of people saying we need to find a common ground, and that's what I would urge. And some people are saying that it is more of a parent's responsibility to find funding for this program, to make this program go into the future be a feasible and sustainable addition to our school. I would say that the community and the board need to work together. Because I see a lot of support from the community side, and I see a board that wants to work with us, or at least I would hope the board would want to work with us. I greatly appreciate the fact, being a student, like, you're all about democratic process. I greatly appreciate the fact that there is a meeting tonight to allow us to speak our minds, to allow the community to have a voice. I would also like to comment on, I'm a high school student, I'm a junior, and I've taken three years of Spanish. I maybe know Spanish a little bit better than those kids know Chinese, and they've been doing it this semester. They've been doing it one semester. They are probably the equivalent of a second-year Spanish student. And learning language, once you are a high school student, is so much harder. It's very joyful because you know much more about the English language, you know much more about writing, you're more advanced. But also, it does have its difficulties. It can be very, very hard to pick on ourselves after years of just learning English. And sometimes it won't be learning English to the extent that you could. And I would just like to say, it's like, when you're teaching these kids in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, all the way up to 2nd and 6th grade, like, that is really the equivalent of 12 years of high school language courses that you're giving these kids. You're giving more for your money. I hear a lot of this about the sustainability of the program, how we're willing to pay for it. I see a lot of community members saying, "If you support us, we will find a way." I see the board saying, "If the community supports us, we're working towards this." I've heard many times, "We're not against you." And so I would hear, I would like to hear that the community and the board are... And so I would hear, I would like to hear that the community and the board are working together. Thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a few more, and then, you know, I think that, you know, we've heard quite a bit. We appreciate it all, but we'll take a few more, and then I think we'll probably retire for tonight. I think we've been here for almost two hours, and now I'm going to go a lot, appreciate it all, man. We're going to go.
Okay, Rob again. I'm very familiar with how swamp the administration is, as a superintendent. I have a pretty good idea. Which would lead me to this idea, as far as deciding, technically deciding access there. I think there's a lot of fear that that might be the case. But I would say this. If our superintendent, currently under the circumstances we have, doesn't have enough time to be the direction for this program, perhaps we should wait a little while, have structure in place, so that she does have an opportunity to be the guiding light for this thing. Which means status quo, get it going again another year. Give her a chance to get her feet set, or a chance to get all settled in, and figure out more about our finances, and every other character that's going to be playing a role in our district. Thank you.
Okay, well, the board appreciates, you know, you all coming out tonight, and showing your support for this. It's important for us to, to, you know, listen to you. You guys definitely show your passion for this, no doubt about that. We've seen a presentation that the Chinese Merton teachers gave us at the board meeting, which was pretty inspiring. So we will definitely, you know, take this all into consideration. I don't, we don't have a hard deadline here for each one of you. So we will probably be talking about when we actually can make that decision. I'm thinking that maybe push more toward April, but I can't say that for sure right now. But I think it would probably be a good idea to do your back to the ground, to the board, to the decision. I appreciate our own coming out. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
All of whom? Second.
All of whom, favorite, say aye?
Aye, aye, aye.
You oppose? Most should care, saying aye.